That was loud. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend. North Bend City Council, North Bend Urban Renewal Agency Work Session for Monday, February 26th at 4:31 in the council chambers. Go ahead and call the meeting to order and let's go ahead and have a roll call of here. I'll have our city recorder take roll call, starting with Council Jones.
Council Jones, here.
Council Hamilton.
Welcome.
Council Garvin.
Here.
Mayor Engelke.
Here.
Council Goll.
I'm here.
Council Scholz.
Here.
Council Nora.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And I don't believe we had any public comments this evening, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll move on to number four, which is Advanced Health Related Social Needs Benefit Discussion, page one. Is that a, do we have a guest speaker or we have an in-person speaker?
We have in-person and we also have online. I mean, if you want to come up to their station here and there's a little microphone in the middle that picks you up.
How exciting.
Um, and, and then we have the presentation. And so you have the floor.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here. My name is Amanda McCarthy. I'm the Director of Social Determinants of Health at Advanced Health, serving our Medicaid members in Kuzan Curry Counties. I'm here tonight to talk about the new covered benefit for our Medicaid members that aims to address social determinants of health, specifically those around climate, housing, and food and nutrition. We can go to the next slide. We're going to talk a little bit about our, what the benefit is, who's covered, how the benefit will implement, because it's large, so it'll implement over time. What the referrals and care management proportions will look like. We're just going to talk about those briefly and then we'll have some question time at the end. If you have questions. So this benefit is bucketed into three big sections, the climate, the housing, and the food and nutrition. And it's this way mainly because it will implement like that over a period of time. So for the climate benefit, we have, these are devices that maintain healthy temperatures and clean air. So air conditioning, heaters, air filtration, medical refrigerator, and portable power supplies. They're aimed to really make sure that those who are most at risk clinically don't suffer the negative impacts of poor air quality, excessive heat, excessive cold. The lack of ability to store lifesaving medications or run lifesaving devices during power outages. For the housing benefit, we are covering rental assistance and utility assistance for six months' time, as well as pre-tenancy and tenancy support services, which could look like deposits on housing that has been found or eviction mitigation. Then there's also housing-focused navigation and care management for organizations in our community who already offer supports. They can get paid for those services. For food and nutrition, we're really aiming to meet the need of food insecurity. And so when a member has food insecurity and/or a chronic condition that would benefit greatly from fruits and vegetables or medically tailored meals, those are going to be covered for Medicaid members as well. So now we'll talk about who's covered, because like, like any other covered benefit under the Medicaid plan, there are eligibility criteria. And so one of them is that there's a population that you have to be a part of, and the other portion of this is a clinical need. So it's not anybody who wants one can have one. It's a member who is defined in the populations you see in that first box. So they're currently homeless or at risk of being homeless. They're discharged from adult behavioral health residential treatment centers. They're child welfare involved. They're either, they're transitioning to dual status, which means they have Medicare primary, Medicaid secondary. They're released from incarceration, they're youth with special healthcare needs, or they have this larger bucket of clinical and social risk factors. That bucket allows us to look at individual requests on a case-by-case basis to see how we can actually get that member what they're asking for. For the housing portion, eligible population is the at-risk-of-homelessness population as defined by HUD. So the Oregon Health Authority has chosen the HUD definition for continuity and standardization, but they did not adopt all of the HUD processes, just the definition of at-risk-of-homelessness. And what you see there is a lot of time-bound and very specific categories in order to identify a member that is on, on the cusp of homelessness there. And then for food and nutrition, our eligible members are those with an identified food insecurity. And we, we do that through social determinants of health screening, which is an established process along our primary care providers in the network. It's also done in other settings like care management and any place where a member can identify services that are aimed at a specific population. And then those who have a diagnosis where they could benefit from the medically tailored meals. So for that instance, I usually use diabetes poorly controlled or they have hypertension and eat a low-salt diet and those types of things. And those, those, that area is where a provider can write a prescription and then state that medical necessity. So next, we're going to talk a little bit about implementation. So as you can imagine, when we're talking about these populations and we're talking about the benefit themselves, it's a lot to put the wheels on. It's a lot of logistics. And so the Oregon Health Authority, after they received initial approval of the demonstration waiver with the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, or CMS, they started marching along this timeline. The climate benefit was supposed to go live in January of 2024. And due to some discussion back and forth with CMS, they didn't get approval in time. So we couldn't go live in January. So they, they bumped that, that timeline to March. So on Friday this week, the climate benefit will go live. We've done a lot of work at the CCO to ensure that our partners in the community and our members are, are aware. And, and my presence here tonight is really to help you guys know what's happening. As far as this is concerned, I imagine it will raise some questions that you might be faced with out and about in the community or through a partner or however. And so this does go live with the population that I mentioned. The housing is on track to go live in November with that at-risk-of-homeless population. And then the food will go live in January of 2025. Now, through the process over the last year, the initial waiver was approved in September of 2022. And so all of 2023 was spent trying to figure out how to put, you know, all the logistics behind this. And in that process, there was some tailoring of these eligible populations. And what we anticipate is after the food goes live in January, we'll see those other populations that were previously funneled out will start to come back online. So we could see an expansion of these services for covered members through the course of 2025, after the full suite is implemented. And so just a little bit on referrals, this is a referral-based benefit because members have to be identified as eligible and authorization does have to exist. So we have referrals anticipated from community benefit organizations, care coordination, care management, healthcare providers, and other community organizations that serve our members in one way or another. We also have a duty to outreach our members directly. So we can, we can send flyers, mailers, we can determine if they could potentially be eligible via diagnosis and reach out to them directly. And then we often have requests for services like these through our existing flex fund process, which is a health-related spending, dollars that allow us to reinvest in our members for services that aren't covered traditionally, but are very beneficial to their overall health outcomes. And so we have a direct relationship to make sure that whatever request comes in gets the most appropriate review and approval. We are using Unite Us, which is a community information exchange, as our primary pathway for referrals. So we have a lot of organizations in the community that are using that platform. It's, excuse me, a cloud-based platform. It's really great for closed-loop referrals. And it's been very slow to, to be adopted in our community, but it's, it's coming up there. It's, it's very exciting to see more and more organizations onboard into the Unite Us platform. And then the last portion of this is around care management. So we don't expect any member to receive a service without also receiving some kind of care management. So we have a lot of members who are already engaged. They're getting RAP services. They're meeting and checking in with, with care managers who are helping them navigate the healthcare system and the social service systems. And so we have a duty to these members as well to make sure we're checking in with them after six months of them having their device, because these are specific to the climate for right now. More details will come out on the housing and food as they approach nearer. But we'll be, we'll be in touch with them. We're also leveraging as many of the existing care management relationships as possible, so we don't overburden our members with another relationship that might make them feel vulnerable. And so, yeah, we're definitely looking to, to make this benefit as impactful as possible. And the Oregon Health Authority has designed it in a way that makes a very low barrier, where members can attest to some of the eligibility criteria. We, as a CCO, are in charge of making sure we gather all the documentation required to determine their eligibility. And and so we're hopeful it's going to be impactful. Now, obviously, knowing our community, we expect the larger impact to be in the housing section of the benefit. And so we're getting ready and making sure that we are collaborating with all of our housing organizations here locally and in the surrounding areas. Just to make sure that we're, we're really trying to approach it from any angle possible to get members what they need. All right. That was a little bit about that benefit. And I hope if you have questions, you can reach out to me anytime. It's my favorite thing to talk about right now. I'm literally everywhere talking about this. So if you have questions, let me know. Or if you have a couple of minutes, I can answer whatever questions.
Do we have any questions from the council today for Amanda? Council Nora?
The funding comes, is it, is it cost through funding from the federal government to the state government? Is that how it's?
Yeah. Not through HUD, no. So this is part of the 1115 demonstration waiver that, or the Oregon Health Authority has. So it's part of that, the way that they currently benefits. It's just money in addition to what they currently have. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, yeah.
Amanda, for the benefit of the council, this is a critical number when talking about overall North Bend, if you will. North Bend has thirty, thirty-nine point seven one percent of all residents that are low to medium income, low to moderate income. And so when you're really talking about four of every ten people or two of, you know, every five, potentially is one or two paychecks away from homelessness. That is North Bend's statistics. You go to, say, Port Orford, there, I believe, about fifty-seven percent. So that gives you a little contrast of our economy here in the city of North Bend.
Okay. Well, we appreciate everything that you do for the community and thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Number five on the agenda is the potential sanitary sewer rate increase discussion. I know we have our Public Works Director coming up to the table here, looking all positive and cheering today.
Welcome to come up and join them.
And he's got a, he's got a theme of people.
Back-up singers.
So I'm.
We have a board here.
Looks like we've got our discussion item pages and I feel like there's a PowerPoint coming. Looks like there's a PowerPoint.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Last year, as part of our council goal-setting, we discussed initially that a sewer rate increase. It's been a long time in coming. It's a necessity, in my opinion. And what I've come tonight to do is kind of demonstrate where we're at and why this sewer increase is such a priority item. Last May, you authorized for a rate study, which is really the financial modeling portion of the rate study. There are a company called Waterworth. We were pushing initially to try to get potentially last November, a rate increase on the ballot because of Measure 676, which limits us to any increase or the social security rate of cost-of-living rate to go to a vote of the people. David analyzed the potential voter turnout and the combination of the magic and votes. And it appeared that November of this year was probably our best time to put a vote out should we need to do a rate increase. So I'm going to start with a little bit of history on rate increases. Back when you built the last treatment plan upgrade, you did twenty-five percent rate increases for four years in pro. That was a fairly capital-intensive project. We spent a little over seven and a half million dollars to upgrade the treatment plant. And you started a rate increase two years prior and it continued during construction and after. And then the rates have been fairly stable since then with about a twenty-five percent increase every five years, five to seven years. In 2002, did a rate study, which recommended a sewer rate increase. It was twenty dollars at that time to about thirty-eight dollars. Council approved a five-dollar, about a five percent rate increase at that time. Same thing happened in 2010. The city hired a consultant to do a rate study who recommended numbers were around forty-two, forty-three dollars a month for a flat-rate residential. Council again did about a five percent increase to thirty dollars. That was implemented in 2013. Up until Measure 676, which I believe was twenty-twenty or?
May 2020.
We were kind of behind right there. At that point, we were seven years past our last rate increase. And although it's been very nice to have cost-of-living increases, we started out twenty-five percent behind at that point, basically, is what I wanted to indicate. I had included in your packet our capital, our current five-year capital improvement plan. And, and these are real items. Maybe a little fuzzy out towards the fifth year because there's a lot of things in there. When you look at the equipment replacement, you know, we projected that we'd need to replace our aeration diffuser, I mean, our blower, turbo blower next, well, actually this year. And it just happened to blow up. Two weeks ago, Mike?
Yeah.
Two weeks ago. So
Right on schedule.
You know, some of this is realistic as we get five years down the road. These are realistic replacements, but sometimes something else steps in its way ahead of time. Other business, yeah.
Yeah.
And then we also, I also included in it, our treatment plant's thirty-three years old. My, I was thinking of an analogy today. And think about it, you have a nineteen ninety-one car. Does it still work? Certainly it does. If you've been maintaining it, and we have been maintaining our treatment system, but average mileage on a car, ten to twelve thousand miles, you're at three hundred and thirty thousand to four hundred thousand miles on that car. You're starting to replace real things like transmissions and motors, maybe a new paint job. The maintenance gets expensive down the road. And that's, that was kind of my analogy for a treatment plant. That's where we're getting. Do they have classic cars that last forever? Yeah, but they're not cheap and they've got a lot of money in them. And they aren't used every day. If we look at our conveyance system, when you look, and you don't have, I have ages of every one of these on there. There's one nineteen sixty-seven system, which is Lombard Avenue, which is scheduled for this year. And there's one nineteen sixty-eight, which is Oak Street. The rest of those are nineteen twenty-three through nineteen fifty-two systems. So they're seventy, over seventy years old, up to a hundred years old. That's on this system. And my analogy kind of for your collection system is think of it as a roof on your house. And in this case, we spent the extra money and put a corrugated metal roof on it, which, believe it or not, lasts a lot longer than your, your asphalt shingles. And their estimated life's forty to seventy years. But if nineteen forty-nine, you put a metal roof on your house, I'll guarantee you today it's probably got lots of leaks and you're going to need to fix it. And that's kind of my analogy for our collection system. And that's where we're at. It doesn't mean if you had fifty-eight buildings, we've got fifty-eight miles of sewer, that every one of them is going to be leaking. But it means
Most.
Most of them are, most are going to need to be replaced. Damaged your roof, caused damage to the rest of your structure, which is our treatment plant and our pump stations. So those are my two simple analogies to kind of give you an idea. You'll also look at the cost, although our equipment replacement, we started out next year, we've got a bump in our system right now, partially because our EPA grant, we're funding, we had one point three million dollars to fund that. One point three four, to be exact. So we have a couple of projects on there that have a blip in our pump station. And we also have the following year replacing our combination sewer cleaner, which is not a cheap piece of equipment. It's like, not quite as bad as buying a ladder truck, but it's the same price as a regular engine. You know, similar piece of equipment, really, when you think about it. And Joe's back there, they do sixty thousand feet of cleaning and TV in the years, so that thing gets used. You know, that's their cleaning twelve miles of sewer every year. So that's part of our rotation required by our permit. That thing gets used. It's an expensive piece of equipment. It kind of scales down below there, but you're looking at an average over our next five years of spending five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in equipment replacement at the treatment plant. On our sewer system, if you take that seventy years, say, and everything lasts seventy years, we have fifty-eight miles. And to replace it at today's cost, today's cost, we should be spending about two point two million dollars a year and replacing our collection system. Now, we've been replacing that's close to three-quarters of a mile. We were replacing a quarter to three-eighths of a mile for the last thirty years. We're behind. That's the reason our average age, when I first came to work here, our average age of our system was fifty-six years old. Today it's fifty-nine years old. And it's getting older as we speak. I'm going to get into the financials on that. Here, I have a presentation. Waterworth's the company we hired to do our financial analysis on our rates. And that, this is all based on combination, the age of our system, what our current operating costs are, which have been pretty steady, and what our anticipated capital improvement costs are. And as noted in the memo I gave you, at our current rate of growth, it looks like we'll be on a major treatment plan upgrade about twenty thirty-nine. We'll be at capacity, have to do an upgrade. Kuzbe is doing the same thing right now on their plant one, which is very similar size to our plant. Remember, Kuzbe has two, even though their population is larger, they have two plants. And they're spending twenty-seven million on their plant today, which a simple three percent calculation makes that thirty-nine million dollars in twenty thirty-nine. This rate increase isn't even addressing that. That's, that's down the road. That's far enough down the road. We can plan that.
You're just full of good news. Before we move, can I, I just want to make sure I have two sets of numbers correct. So what I'm reading and hearing is that our sewer pipes are designed for fifty years and our average age is fifty-nine.
Correct.
And our plants are designed for fifty years and our average age is thirty-three.
Our treatment plant has two basic components to it.
Oh, yeah. So.
Your tankage, which is a big portion of the cost, probably sixty percent of the cost you have there is concrete tanks and structures. It's life's fifty to seventy years, design life. Again, capacity's going to change that, but the life of that itself.
Okay.
And operating in that treatment plant, you have mechanical equipment on every segment of the treatment system. You have mechanical equipment that's there. That has a life of fifteen to twenty-five years. So primarily what you're seeing is we're replacing the mechanical equipment portions of that. We may have to seal some of this tankage or that type of thing, but the base tankage, what you'll see in our equipment and plant replacement plan, for example, this is a secondary clarifier rebuild in twenty twenty-seven. That includes some scaling of the concrete tank and resealing it, but mostly that's the, the drive and the mechanism in there. And that was built in nineteen seventy-one.
And when you talk about capacity, you're talking about how much can go through there in terms of years rather?
That, that's correct. Our plant's designed for a population of thirteen thousand. We're at ten thousand, six hundred and something today. We've been experiencing the last ten years, a little over one percent growth. In the last four years, we had about a two percent growth, but prior to that, we had about a half percent growth. So.
You had my two grandbabies?
That's bringing more in as we speak. But
And that's our legitimate population.
That's, yeah, that's, well, the homeless, I think, is somehow counted in the
Well, that's not
Census number.
That's not the numbers I'm referring to.
Oh, okay.
It's the folks that are renting out and have things on their properties and interconnects and things that are the real population.
And so there's, there's the, the agent infrastructure and how, and then the funds are so limited that we're not able to update as we go along. So that gap is getting bigger and bigger. And so you know, I, I know we're going to see some numbers here in a second, but if, if this wasn't addressed and our rates weren't increased and we weren't able to do the upgrades that we needed, what happens in a scenario like this? And, you know, ten, ten years from now, is it, do cities end up having like catastrophic sewer failures and just?
Well, they do. It's still fairly rare, but typically what happens you do start having catastrophic failures. And as we mentioned prior to this, you know, there's funding available. There's both, both a revolving loan fund for the state of Oregon. And there are potential EPA funds available, but anytime you apply for these funds, one of the issues is they want you to do a rate study and they want you to look at what's your realistic. And, and at the end of this presentation, I'm going to show you where we're at comparatively. I, I don't want to get into that yet, but where we're at comparatively. So you have to have, in order to go out and get a fourteen million dollar grant like Lakeside did from combination grant loan from the state, you need to raise your rates. At that point, they force you to raise your rates. They help you fix them. Any rates get there anyway, typically even higher than they would have been if you were proactive and.
I think the rationale, though, is you're paying your fair share.
And, yeah, we're not.
You don't want the state or the federal government to subsidize North Bend. They don't subsidize. So that's, I think that's the real core.
There's a whole bunch of, or has been in the last couple of weeks. There've been a whole bunch of. There's a whole bunch of, or has been in the last couple of weeks, there've been a whole bunch of birds that have been. On sewer rates on phase two. Thank God, there's enough smart North Bend people that have came on there and said, cause I mean, they are, they're. It's mainly addressed at Kuzbe and, and rightfully so, if you look at the numbers, but. There is enough North Bend people that realize what we're paying. And that's, that's gonna be an ally of ours going few, into the future if we're gonna put this on the ballot.
And when we get to there, I'll kind of talk about that. You're gonna see some a little bit shocking numbers here in a minute. And we won't be up there. We're not projecting to be up there, but one of the things I wanted to say is. You know, these rate analysis are based on. We're spending about a half million dollars a year at the treatment plant or equipment. And about one point. One million on our collection system here. That's what we're projecting. These numbers based on, as I just said, our system current. If we're replacing on a seventy year, strictly seventy year basis, we'd have to be spending about two point two million dollars a year on our collection system. So we're not trying to jump there all at once. We're increasing what we have been doing. Like I said, we've been doing a quarter to three eighths of a mile where we should be doing three quarters of a mile. We're getting up to that three quarter mile. And maybe a little more, but we're gonna get there gradually. We're not saying, let's spend ten million dollars tomorrow. But that's what. On the financial model, that's what this is based on. We're ramping up to get there. And we've done a good job. Like I said, Joe's sitting in the background here. He videos an average of sixty thousand feet a year, twelve miles. Of it, he knows what condition the system's in. But the fact of the matter, like I said, on the, out of the. Segments you see listed. And I also threw the in-house in, cause we have, we do in-house because it's less expensive. It's averaging. Two twenty to two fifty a lineal foot for a sewer system to replace it. And then. The defense of the contractors, we take the easier stuff, the shower stuff. We take the easier stuff. We contract out. The harder stuff, so it's not apples and apples and we're paying.
Understanding that we take the easier stuff. So our tabs for a mile is something and contracting is something else.
Is more expensive. We generally eight feet in depth. Unless we try to do in-house. Unless busy streets, we're not gonna send our crew out in one-on-one to fix a sewer or in Broadway or new. They may fix one on an emergency, but that's not their. Anything, eight to ten. We take our pick a little bit over ten feet in deep. Depth, excuse me. We contract out.
Do we mostly do like open trench type of replacements?
We do mostly, yes. And that's primarily because of the service lateral systems. I mean, we just. Tomorrow night, you're gonna be asked to award a cured-in-place pipe project, which is. Basically, it's an inverted sock. That they heat treat to invert and go through the pipe and seal the pipe. Now. No dig at all. It's very nice on that. It's very efficient and part of that system's from going across the intersection of Broadway and Newmark. Although we have a dig-up project in Newmark and Broadway scheduled for next year. It's efficient in that aspect with low number of service connections, that type of thing. If you have. A lot of service connections. Then the laterals are in a status shape as the main line is. You need, if you need to replace those, then it gets less efficient to do. The in-situ methods.
And Joe will come out and TV your lateral if you need it. Very helpful. I took advantage of that.
Tell you what condition your, your own service is in. So this is the financial model.
What do they do in Kuzbe? Don't answer that. I called her recently. Move on.
So we're gonna start with the revenue requirements. And this, this is just our general operating expenses. You'll see some dips in there partially. Because the data. Up to today. Isn't necessarily haphazard, but this is based on actuals before, so you have some of this ups and downs depending on what you spend on materials, what. You did. And then it's just basically a three percent growth from here on out. Uh, we have a. Budget, this doesn't just include. Doesn't just include. Personnel services. In fact, this. About our personnel services are just under a million dollars of this. The rest of us. Our chemicals that have gone up pretty significantly since twenty twenty are. Power costs, everything that's been increasing, but this is, this is our general operating expenses. And what you'll see down the road here in just very shortly is what our revenue is, but. So we're currently running at about two million dollars a year in expenses. We have a projection for a bump this year and I'll, I'll have to look to see what that is, cause I'm not one hundred percent positive. It isn't personnel services, trust me. Um, part of it is our permit. We're gonna have to do a facilities plan. We're doing a. Diet test of our outfall, which is some restrictions that are in our permit. And we're still doing some toxics testing, our metals to toxics testing. Which we got issued a new permit in twenty twenty, late twenty twenty-one, took an effect in twenty twenty-two. Which has increased our operating cost. Because our overseers are saying you need to do more of this.
What, why did it drop there between twenty-one and twenty-two?
I'm guessing that we didn't have anything break that year that we hadn't fixed.
Well, plus the rest is projected, so.
The rest is projected, I mean. Right. And it's. Either, I think it's a three percent, but it might have been a two and a half percent rate of increase. This is our projected capital improvements. The big blip, as you saw, we're spending our EPA grants, so we've got one point three million dollars there. We'll spend it between twenty-four and twenty-five. Some of those projects were delayed and be, before twenty twenty-two. They just didn't. Look back there. They took our budget actuals from twenty-three and on, so. Kind of ignore that there's nothing to the left because we've been spending. We did have a low year in twenty-three. But we've been spending about seven hundred thousand a year prior to that in capital expenses. You can remember what all you've approved. You know, that's. Just because it doesn't show, it doesn't mean it wasn't there. But this shows the blip. Um, it's based on our fat improvement plan and then after twenty twenty-eight. It's basically, again, this is three percent. I know, I can't remember on the plant. I think it was two and a half. That we looked at as an increase on it. So here's our capital improvements and our operating expenses stacked. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. One on top of the other. Here's our revenues. Our revenues have been pretty steady. The three different elements or four different elements you'll see in there, the. The tan or orangish is our sewer service sales. Other operating revenue. We surplus equipment, we. Have a little bit. We have septic haulers that bring material into us. We treat that. That type of thing. Non-operating and interest on, cause we have a lot of reserves right now, interest on our reserves. Non-operating revenue. Remember what that is and I apologize. I think that's actually our miscellaneous. Sales of. Of equipment and, and services. And then the blue is our EPA grant. Current EPA grant, so that's. Basically one point three four million and it's projected over two years. With our rate increases averaging about three percent. Everything's scaled up. If we do nothing, our average, we've done twenty percent over the last five years, which is. Almost four, we had eight point seven, eight point three. Two years ago. And a five point nine the year before. But historically, three percent's kind of an average. So this is. Expenses versus revenues right now. You can see we're spending it faster than. We're earning it, if that makes sense. Now we're getting into our cash reserves and our cash position. We haven't been spending it over the last. Five years prior to this, our cash reserves have been building up. We need to be spending it and part of that's due. Just to. Holding a reserve and part of it's due to. Staffing levels, we've been doing what we can, but we need to be fixing more sewer and more things at the plant. We're, we're trying to correct that. Part of our rate can. Increase would assume that we're gonna actually console out. We'll still keep doing. Seven hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs ourselves in-house. But we'll probably have to hire a consultant to take on additional projects basing on our staffing level. To get up to the about one point five million. Of expenses we anticipate to catch back up. But this shows us going. Obviously cash negative in twenty twenty-six. That's based on the projections you see here. The big drops, again, we had. Part of the six million, we got that grant in twenty. Twenty twenty-two, so that's part of the. Money sitting at reserve. We're gonna spend it down. If we get on our new path. We're gonna be starting to have issues now. You'll see the red line dotted line and the. Black dotted line. These are based on cash plus. Three months of operating expenses and coverage is the red line. That's where we'd like to be at a minimum. The black line is a operating threshold with a half a million dollars sitting in the bank for a big. Yeah, the, the parachute. So here's our revenues. Versus cash. And now we're starting to talk about increases. What? What are possible increases? And I have three options here and. This is looking at how we ramp up and there's. Lots of options. We could feather this out. Increases over. Ten years, we could. Do it all at once. We can borrow money, but we have to pay it back. There's lots of options and there are, are little tweaks in between, but these are realistic options. We thought we'd throw up there at you and I'll. I'll tell you what these cost. I mean. Thirty percent increase means something to you, but it doesn't say what, what's the actual dollar. Here at the end, but. So option one. As we said, our cash position starts to go negative in twenty twenty-six. We're spending more than we're making. That's presuming, I'm gonna qualify that. That's presuming we stay on our schedule. I mean, we're committed to part of this mostly for this year to spend the EPA grant. If we quit fixing stuff, it's gonna keep breaking or falling apart, but if we quit fixing stuff, we can stabilize our cash position. Cause if we're not spending money. But we're just kicking the can down the road is. Simply what I'm gonna tell you is we need to be doing this. In fact, we're only doing a little over half what. Our depreciation says we're doing and we're still looking at a rate increase. So this is option one, which is a. Thirty percent increase in fiscal year twenty-five, based on November election. A twenty-five percent increase in fiscal year twenty-six. A twenty percent increase in fiscal year twenty-seven. And then just going on the average back on the cola, in essence, the social security cola. Um, so you've got a little over. Eighty percent or seventy-five percent increase in through, over three years. When I say a little overs, cause one increase stacks on the others, so it's not straight math there, but.
What is that saying, Ralph? That you're wanting a three-year levy? No?
No, that, that, if we went to a vote. We would give the, we'd be asking for them. We're gonna say we're gonna increase it by thirty percent and that actually equates to a increase in our rates. Which are going up three point two percent if you approve. Tomorrow night, um, they'll go up to thirty-six, sixty-seven, I believe. So we'll go up thirty percent. Above that.
I don't wanna jump ahead on your slides, but there, the actual dollar, I'm guessing the actual dollar amount is in like a couple of slides.
I, maybe you'll answer this in a later sw- slide. What I'm curious about is. When do we count as contributing our fair share so that we're eligible for our fair share in federal state grants?
EPA is gonna look at, or any regulatory agency is gonna look at. Both your rate study, what your financials say, and they're also gonna look at how you compare to. Are there cities of your size, other cities in Oregon? So I can tell you right now. You have it in your last piece of paper I already sent you. Sixty-four, twenty-seven a month is the average on the people we studied. If you look at the South Coast or Kuzbe. It's actually higher.
And we won't really get to that until twenty-six.
We, depends on which option you choose. We'll, we'll get there. We're gonna get close to that fairly. Quickly with a rate service. Now remember, these rates are today's rates. And I'll kind of go over that at the end, because some of the rates you're looking at, some of them have been increased recently, some of them haven't. You know, so a lot of these are looking at being increased also. The classic one I'm gonna say is you saw Bunker Hill was relatively low. They were only ten dollars more than us. Well, they're connected to Kuzbe's wastewater treatment plant number one. It's going through a twenty-seven million dollar upgrade. I'm just guessing that they're gonna have to raise their rates to pay for their share plant one. Their rate's been in place at forty-five, fifty-four for ten years. They pay a share, they're gonna have to pay a share of wastewater treatment plant one from Kuzbe. I don't know what that increase is gonna be, but I'm just guessing that they're gonna have to increase their rates.
Yeah, it also just seems like a long time. A five-year period is a long time to be below. Three months of operating expenses and some cash.
And we're gonna present, I'm just, this is kind of an. An initial, I'm not gonna call it an initial presentation. This is a real presentation, but we're gonna have to fine tune this. We're gonna keep it in the public eye up, assuming. We go to a vote in November this year and we're gonna do multiple presentations on this. I'll do multiple to council. When we do our, uh, public works. Talk of the town, this is gonna be a major subject and we'll have to, uh, up until if we file in August for. Then staff's gonna have to go silent. I'm trying to educate you. To carry on beyond that point.
Thank you.
All right, let's see the next slide.
Staff will continue to be able to educate, just not, um, giving an opinion.
So this, this is one option. Our second option is a bigger increase rate upfront. And you can see our cash position doesn't dip before, below, excuse me, before. Below our target barely, a little smoother transition and on it. Goes out, it's a fifty percent right off the bat, a two-year increase, um, realistically. And a twenty percent increase the next year. It actually goes up higher quicker, but. You can see our cash position is better on this. We looked at. Also doing loans, we actually. You know, going into this rate increase, we can look at the state revolving phone, fund monies. All this does is delay. The rate increase realistically. What happens there is we borrow money, so we have cash to infuse, get through even though it does show it on our operating, getting below our operating threshold, uh, that just means we're a little tight. We can't have an oops for twenty twenty seven. But loans, we could do that also, and I'm just showing this option out there to show you we could do a loan. But i- if you also notice there's a fold by five percent increase. And as we project farther out. That obviously that one's going up pretty fast down the road, you can always stop that one back, again, there's, we can play. This is all in a software program, it's easy to go change numbers. And see the exact how these curves work and and everything else. So Waterworth is who provided our financial model. Here's what your options cost and I forgive me because I actually missed an increase on option one. Cause the last increase is only three percent and it's supposed to be twenty. So here's the kinda numbers you're looking at. Option one, around forty, I'm just gonna say forty eight dollars, I'm just gonna round those, here's the numbers that are there. Going up to fifty seven twenty and then roughly sixty dollars in, actually a little over sixty dollars in three years. Oops, I should have left it there. Option two, which is a big increase upfront, hits a little harder upfront, it actually stays a little higher on down the road, that's gonna give us better cash flow down the road, but again, any of these can be tweaked. Goes up to sixty seven seventy four. And then with the loan, uh, you can see the numbers are fairly similar. But that's with a five percent increase down the road. So those numbers start ratcheting up higher instead of just going back to our measure six seven one seventy six, which will probably average around three percent. So we'd have to have a longer increase. And again, we can play games, we can expand this over five years, we can, we we still gotta watch our cash position as when we drop below. But we could taper this out over five years. Option one, for example, or option two, for examples, hit them hard at the beginning. Uh, or we can taper it out, but the bottom line is we're looking at in twenty seven somewhere in the sixty dollars a month range after three years. Just to get our cash flow positive and maintain our system. So then I'm gonna bring you back to, um, and that's the last presentation there, then we'll go back to the sewer rate comparisons. Which is in your packet. We're thirty five fifty three today, we're going up to thirty six sixty seven, probably um, March first, which was a three point two percent increase. Cause that's what's allowed under our current charter amendment. So you can see the rates, we're I'm sure there's somebody in Oregon that's probably cheaper than us, I haven't found them yet, but I'm sure there's somebody in Oregon that's probably cheaper than us, I just haven't Portland's about sixty four dollars, by the way, I just didn't wanna throw them in, because you're talking a metropolitan of uh five hundred thousand area. You see the rates that are similar ours, Rosenberg Sanitary Authority is about thirty six thousand population. Um, their treatment system's about three times the size of ours, but you're spreading it out. Eugene's two hundred thousand population, you're spreading it out over a bigger, and in most instances, not every you know, bigger is more efficient and is less costly per unit. And the order of these, I updated them, this was a chart that Coos Bay gave us. Originally in these rates were in order of expense, um, as you can see, for example, seaside's fairly low, but now they're at eighty one fourteen. That was two years ago. Lakeside is has a program ratcheting up with their treatment plant, they're going up about twenty percent each year. Up to about eighty dollars, I think, in two years. Uh, but right now they're at sixty five eighty nine, I'm just showing you today's. But these were in order of cost, for some reason, on their study, they had us in seventy two dollars a month or something, which we were at the time less than what we are today at thirty five fifty three, but
Well, this is all good stuff, Ralph, but what, so what would if we say go for it and we're gonna write a ballot measure and gonna go to the people. Is it gonna say you're gonna pay this in twenty four, this in twenty five, this in twenty six, this in twenty seven?
That's what, that's what we will say, we will come down to some options that I've given you some options there, part of it's basically we wanna spread it out. Over five years, or do we wanna hit it?
What is our, you know, tonight, this is our initial presentation, right, and I'm
This is an initial presentation with real rates.
I would be shocked if there was anybody sitting up here that said do nothing. That I think we all probably are on the agreement that we are on borrowed time and so Mike and right like sort of just shaking your head, the consensus is like we've got to probably go to the, we've got to go to the voters and say, here's where we're at. But the question remains is like, how will we do that, is it the percent stepping, is it? And so I know we don't, that's not something we're gonna decide here tonight, um, but uh, do you have, as as somebody who is, this is your, you are area of expertise person um, for this. Do you, is there a formula that you think is best?
Well, I think stepping it out in somewhat equal increases over anywhere from three to five years is people realize we have to raise our rates, they're gonna look at and realize we have to raise our rates. But there's some shock factor and that's part of the discussion tonight, that's the reason I wanted to introduce this to you, there's some shock factor. Because there's numbers like option one is an eleven dollar, the first initial raise is an eleven dollar raise. And then a ten dollar raise and a nine dollar fifty three cent raise over three years, that's about ten dollars a year over three years. Option two, when we're hitting them hard with fifty percent right off the bats, an eighteen dollar and thirty three cent a raise, then a eleven dollar raise the following year.
Well, I guess that that's where my confusion, you know, I'll I'll vote for it, give me a ballot, I'll vote for it right now, but I don't wanna make it too confusing for the citizens in our town, and are you better off? Well, I don't know what them numbers you just said, but got you in the middle and take that and run. Or
That's a good question, Pat, and that's, that's part of what I'm presenting here is would you like to do? Mathematically wise, we could kinda make it work, like do three roughly equal raises and do it three years. We could do the same thing over five years.
Maybe that's a town hall that we have or a talk of the town where you start hearing from people if if the consensus of the groups that we speak to and just when we talk to our people in the community, if we start hearing you know, we split, this piece of paper here needs to be front page of the news. You know, this this needs to be shared with everyone to say
I can clean that up and make it prettier, but I just
This needs to like be in our back pocket and going everywhere with everyone we talk to, so that then when we in in those conversations it's in the next few months, cause I know we would have till August is when things would be filed. For a November ballot, start asking people like, what would you want, if 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 we're at thirty five and we know that eventually we need to get at least a sixty something? Is it, you want ten dollars over the next three years, start listening to people and then then at some point in a later meeting, we bring back what we're hearing either anecdotally or on the face tube or in town halls. We can start gathering some of that data and I don't know.
I'll go to council, June. So I, to me, there's, there's two ballot questions here. One is, what are we gonna do now? And one is, how do we take the sewer system off the limitations of method one seventy six? As one of the most basic services and say at minimum, we should be working towards um, rates so that we have uh, buckets of grants more available or something. So to me, there's a larger ask, we should be asking.
I think one of those is answered pretty easily and it's, we don't, we don't get to is there, Oscar City Administrator, there's, is there an option to ever change that, she's asking?
Um, as a governing body, uh, with voters, the 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 will of the people, you always have lots of options. One, um, you could do a charter update and take that language out and take a new charter and put it before your people. If they vote on a new charter, that is the will of the people. Two, you could ask for the state legislature to take action and say this is a state charter and why should a uh a a court initiative circumvent uh, charter language on regulated utilities? This is a utility that's regulated by the state and federal government. And so if you do not adhere to maintaining it, you have spills, you are fine. And so you have that option, three, go to your voters every time you want to increase rates over and above the social security. So you have multiple mechanisms to achieve uh, what you need in order to function as a local government.
So I did, so what I didn't hear in there is a ballot initiative that would specifically put aside the sewer system. So that you could have rate increases that were commensurate with what we need instead of being limited. I did not hear you say that, I heard you say for that state legislature.
Well, the charter amendment, he hinted at that on a
Only way that you can circumvent is to go to the people, that was number, option number one, which is if you have to revise your charter, how you revise it, what language you put in your charter is really up to So it, no, it's not misunderstanding, it's just getting to understand what charter amendment is and what authority you have once voted by the people, you could put in a charter that that you want houses to be pink from now on. And if that's what the people approve, all new houses have to be pink.
No more pink buildings, well, the other thing is, the other thing is I recognize that, you know, pair, the pair the pair of ballot measures that we got limiting the ability to increase our fees. You know, they they were, they were well worded, right, one was a number. And one was a remove this power. And so I think you know, if it were me writing this language, I would be like, we would like, we would, we would make a larger ask so that we can make adjustments um, more realistically.
That's, that's realistic, I mean, as David said, you could have a charter amendment or you could repeal part of six one seventy six, which was a charter amendment. Um, to say that this doesn't regulate utilities as we're required, so the only bad thing about that uh, is do you want the target back on your back when you come up here and say we're gonna raise sewer fees? Eleven dollars next year. Um, or twenty five percent next year, because now it's back up to city council. Or do you want it spelled out in a charter amendment and have the people vote on that specific thing? Honestly, until we hit treatment plant upgrade. We should be able to reasonably maintain the system if we make a jump at this time, um, up to about sixty four dollars a month. Which is kinda the average in here, we're not going above average. We're right in the average there. You know, how we, how we get there or how quick we get there, we do it in multiple steps or do it all at once. Affects our cash flow more than anything else. It doesn't affect our long-term ability to maintain our system.
Yeah, I mean, that's true.
Politically, I hate to see us try and say, okay, we're gonna modify our charter. And not inform them, not inform the public. What this charter amendment is gonna do.
Well, you actually are required exactly, spell out, when you do a charter revision, you actually have to show what changes you're making to the people.
Yeah, but I mean that mayor may not be all in like I mean, if we want a sewer entrance, ask them for a sewer entrance, thirty, twenty five, twenty, be done with it, spell it out exactly what it is, let them make the history. Cause then we can always go
I think that's most transparent.
And I suspect you'll also be doing the same thing for streets. You'll be doing the same thing for public safety, um, as you start to you know, see where the status of the budget is, there are still folks out there that believe we're sitting on, you know, five plus million dollars. And you know, we can spend this money all day long. And that's okay, you know, I also have a bottle and I have a genie stuck in there, at least that's what it says when I bought it at the uh, the tourism shop. But the reality is you will be hearing from our finance director, we we have modeled a lot. And and we'll make those presentations to you. And so I think that the the people north bend will see the budget like they've never seen it before. And understand our finances better than they ever have, if they so choose. This one is critical, so this is a start, but the reality is everything else. It's interesting, you know, I'm following other cities, the city of Newport is looking to um, uh, inch up its um, gas tax. And so you always ask, it's like, folks will always say, well, if they have the highest gas tax, local gas tax in state. How come when you go north, they have cheaper gas than we have here? And so there's lots of factors that play in the cost. Um, we have a supply chain issue here, which affects a lot of our costs. But that said, we'll be coming out of the ramp first with sewer and and the sewer system. Um, and then I I suspect behind that, staff will be coming with presentations. Um, uh, to address our hundred-year rotational roads, and then we're going to have to address public safety.
I did, I saw councillor Nordoff scale up and I say we take one more question on this subject tonight. And then um, what we can do is ask to have another discussion after we talked to some, talked to people in the community, I think we need to have some time in the next month or so, bring it back at a work session and say, you know, what what would you want to see all at once through, you know over three years, try to try to get some feedback so we can get some initial input, um, and then have and then have Ralph, you know, again, I think you're hearing a consensus from everybody that there's, there's gonna be a good chance that we're all gonna be voting on to put this on the ballot in um, in November. So um, and it does sound like there are some other things, I mean, there are, we can talk there are some other things in our charter that we could update, so that could be a conversation that we'd have at another time. And I think our city administrator made a really good point about reach out to our legislators about how, you know, we're letting a court initiative decide on whether or not we could raise rates for things that we are, we must upkeep. So we might be able to do some work there, so I'd like to
That that's going behind orders, work at that time.
Well, not, let's, I think we need to talk about like what those options would look like, so. Councillor Nordoff.
Yes, so I I think, first thing, I think Ralph's intent was not to present all four, three or four options to voters, but to whittle it down to one. Second thing, the new councillors may not know the history of why we have to put these to a vote. And the history is that there was, there was a referendum where the council asked about a pub- possible public safety fee, it was voted down and the council passed a, the fee anyway, and they did not put it on the ballot, it was a split vote, it was under other business. And the public reacted with an initiative that then rolled that back, so there was only the ten dollar public safety fee. There was not the fifteen dollar public safety fee, and the second part was that any increase in fees had to be put in vote, so it was in a reaction to the councils raising the fifteen dollar public safety fee, when it wasn't on the agenda, it was done under other business. Now, it was a split vote. It's very relevant, because that is why
Exactly accurate, that's not accurate, but we're not gonna talk about that tonight. Okay, that's not, a lot of that was true.
Was definitely shocking, five, eight, ten, thirty.
Those events, as she described them, were not exactly how they played out. I will go ahead and ask um our public works director to see if we can put this on the agenda in what, four to six weeks or a lot less?
As soon as you can, I think then we'll
We need at least a month.
As you get back to me, I can give you a preferred option. And as you get back to me, I can give you a preferred option. At, at this point. This was. The reason, primary reason I showed you three options is you're kinda getting to the same place somehow. Um. Whether you wanna start out big and or. Try to smooth it out, it still gets to the same place and our financial model's the same. The only thing in staggering it out. Is it puts us a little bit at risk on operating capital for a couple of years. And that's, I just wanted to show you that model. Um, again, this wasn't put together by me. I gave all the data. To a firm that does this for three hundred and some cities. They plugged in the numbers and this is what they presented back to me, which is kinda what I expected anyway, but.
David, just for a point of clarification, uh. The county is obviously gonna go for ninety eight cents.
Front page news tomorrow says they're going forward.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that in May or is that in?
May.
Okay, that's, I didn't want both at the same time.
There's also a letter to the editor in, in rebuttal to a uh, council letter to the editor. So yes, tomorrow's news, pick it up. Uh, Ralph, will you make sure that our city recorder gets copied that uh, rate study? And then we'll share it to the council so that they have it as well, cause they see it's not in the packet.
Um, can I just mention that there's um, there's a link in here that would be great if we changed it to its proper name. Um, the copy of table four one twenty four is the, is actually equipment replacement. And I think that would be useful to update of, on the website. We go back. If you look on this agenda. One, the first table is conveyance system. The second table is equipment replacement. They look similar, but they're not the same material. When I point somebody to it, I'd like to.
I can clean that up a little bit. Uh, that was actually the charts that I had submitted to the. To Waterworth. Uh, they understood that. And I just reproduced them for you, so that's the same numbers. You're looking at the same numbers that were put into the model.
Absolutely. I was just saying, if the name is updated, it's easy to find when someone goes online, which, you know, I like links.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Okay, so let's see, where are we at here then? So we're good? You have your.
I'm good, as long as you're happy.
All right, so I have about twenty five minutes before I'm gonna have to hand the, hand this gavel over to our council president. You think we can wrap up this meeting in twenty five minutes?
Oh, let's see, I have an.
You're in charge after that. So. So let's go ahead and review the council agenda. I'm just gonna have our city administrator walk us right through that quickly.
All right, quickly, quickly, quickly. All right, so you've got your call to order, pledge allegiance, got your roll call, you got consent agenda calendar. On the consent calendar is the minutes from February thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Any additions, deletions, corrections, amplifications?
To the um, to the consent calendar.
To the minute.
Or to the minute, sorry, to the minutes only. I'm not hearing any from the council at this time.
Okay, therefore hearing none, it'll stay on the uh, consent agenda. The next agenda is the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Kuz County. Area transport, transportation district. This has been vetted back and forth, volleyed back and forth multiple times with our public works. And our city attorney and the attorneys for, the attorney for the Kuz County area transport district. This has to do with the um, uh, uh, bus uh, uh, lane over at the Veterans Administration. Um, does anyone on the council see an issue of this intergovernmental agreement uh, or what it stands for?
No issues from us.
All right, the next is a uh, request. This was a laid ad request. Uh, the Bay Area Hospital is asking for a letter of support. Uh, they sent it to the mayor. Um, we are asking that the uh, council authorize uh, the mayor to sign the letter in support. Uh, for a grant that the Bay Area Hospital seeking, they're seeking congressionally designated funds and so uh. Uh, there is no financial uh, or otherwise uh, requirement on the city. It's simply just a letter of support, so this would be an authorization of the mayor to sign that letter. All right, then there'd be public comment, then there's a public hearing. This is the proposed uh, city fee increases. Um, uh, we have requirement to publish all of our existing fees. Fees are allowed to be increased based on the social security uh, cost of living index. Um, and so if there's any questions, our finance director is here and can answer that. Um, you hear the public hearing, you then go into the resolution. And the resolution then authorizes the increase based on the social security administration cola. We consider, unfortunately, we consider this internally as housekeeping, cause it's done every year. Same thing, we don't set the cola, so.
Okay.
Any questions on that? I'm good?
Thank you.
All right, next is a word of a bid for the cast in place pipe project to Iron Horse LLC. That's on page thirty eight. Uh, in your packet, um, yours. Public Works Director is here. If you want additional information on that project. The amount is for two hundred forty thousand, three hundred forty nine dollars. Um, the project is financed through the wastewater reserve fund fourteen dash forty four dash seventy nine, seventy eight, eight, zero. Um, with uh, which is the appropriate budget of one point eight, one point two eight, and so it's within budget. Any questions uh, or any concerns? Our public director, public works director can answer those?
No.
All right, good there then. Uh, we move on then to uh, we do not have an executive session, so I don't expect anything from executive sessions. City administration report, committee reports, council comments. Do not expect any other business. Correct, Seth? No other business? Yeah, we're all good. Then adjournment. All right, that was that agenda, Madam Mayor.
Easy peasy. Well, let's go ahead and then look at the um, urban renewal agenda.
All right, on there you have call to order, um, public comment. Uh, there's the approval of the O R A minutes for the February thirteenth meeting. Any changes, corrections, applications?
No issues here.
All right, other than that, the executive director's report and then adjournment. With that said, expect you, Madam Mayor.
All right, well, I'm looking back at our uh, agenda. We have nothing on for the rest of the evening, so. Meeting adjourned.